It was just an error.
Yeah.
So that twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-five is gonna move down to fifteen one four twenty?
Five one four two oh.
That's how I'm interpreting what you're saying now. Yes, he's saying yes, so I will move that.
And again, and the savings come into play as the shifts come up where we can save additional money by not filling those specific quality conscious that would be filled at time and a half plus. That gives us the flexibility, but again, it's hard to say, is it gonna be six shifts to do it that way? Four shifts, it's still flowing.
We, I think we could see her beat us to death all night. I have a further question. You'd indicated that you did a four or five year study?
Yes.
Based on hiring these two guys?
Yes.
And over that five year studies, does it show we reduced the budget because your numbers are gonna get better and better and better as we, as we get through the first year or two? Obviously contractual increases are gonna be involved and all that kind of stuff.
Um, it's still, it, they're projected numbers, but the numbers I think are extremely conservative and not gonna show the savings that we're actually gonna be benefiting over the years. I think for us to coming in right now where we're at, we're very pleased, like I said, not only to assume the seventeen thousand dollars that he was given that wasn't in the budget, but to see the reductions we've already accomplished and you see how the overtime has been reduced considerably, I think what we are, I gotta say, Gary's done a great job with this. And, and we're right on target, we're looking good, barring any obscene knock on wood catastrophe that would take place with the personnel.
Then we've had a few hiccups too and we're still.
We're still doing good.
We're still doing good on it.
What I would ask, um, Kevin, is if you'd be kind enough to send us, and I know you did last year, but send us that projection. Yep.
The five year project?
The five year projection.
Sure.
Give it to Deb and she can send it out to us. So we have a chance to kind of get it, reflect on it. I think that'd be good. Um, I think we're gonna be reflecting more on this. I don't wanna spend our entire time on this one thing. I'm gonna suggest if we can to move on and there will be further conversation. Because.
I can also.
This is great. There may be a little place to scrape a little back.
I can, I can give you this. Matter of fact, Mr. Gansy is not on paper. He's on the flash track.
He's very excited.
I can give this to Deb and she could, she could email it to all of you also.
That's great.
It has our individual, the breakdown that we had last year.
Yep.
On all our budget items, and it also has the explanations on every increase or decrease or anything like that.
That's extremely helpful for us. Um, there's a challenge and it's for us, the voters, the FinCom, everyone. When we do make changes like this, designed to save money or provide significantly better service. A, there's always a transition period, particularly when you talk about hiring, training and working with new employees. And for us to understand that and be able to have a handle on why this is gonna continue to be as good as it looked last year when we said, go ahead and hire them, I think is important. So, thank you.
Great. We're gonna move on here, I'm sure, but one thing that I'd like to ask is that, once we get through the first year and those numbers have become clearer, it would be worthwhile for you to come to a board of selectmen's meeting some night and tell us where, what it looks like now after we've gone through the first year. This budget is gonna move forward and the numbers may wind up being different because of our experience.
Exactly, right.
Come and tell us how it's looking six months from now.
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm just saying, keep us up to date on how it's working.
How it's working.
Absolutely.
It does look like a good trend for the overtime. If this is probably a quarter, because I think they, these are behind a little bit, even though it says it's happening here, I think Catherine said it's probably a quarter of the way through the year, these expenses.
For the expenses?
Yeah, to date, even though it says this is through.
Twelve thirty one.
So maybe after.
Twelve thirty one.
Yeah, timing of the change though is what we'll sort of see the impact.
Okay, I thought last time you would say that there are only really four months, not really six months. Yeah.
That was based on invoices, not on.
I think that we were talking about legal services at that point and we had, they, we had not received invoices for legal services.
Oh, so it was only legal?
This is pay though. Pay happens faster.
But all the other numbers in here then really are through December. It was just legal?
Yes, yes.
Seventy one, seven one nineteen through twelve thirty one nineteen.
Okay, 'cause I understood what Catherine was saying to me, this actual was only four months.
No, the only thing with the, with the salary, and I don't know what the timing of that first check in and down in January was, but it wouldn't be.
And these are fantastic. I was saying they were only four months.
But don't forget the.
It's much, it's much easier if you gave us a cut at six months.
That is, it's six months.
Multiple by two.
That's what that is. But there's some departments that have bills, they get one every month.
Because it wasn't budgeted. We didn't budget those two new offices, so that number is low.
Where are their actual showing number? Because they are on the payroll.
It, it would be on the full-time officer wages.
Okay.
I would, I would, I'd just like to say, I, you know, when you guys come to us, I hope you don't feel like we're beating you up and.
No, 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 no.
You know, I, and having said that, I wanna tell you that I, I appreciate the creativity of trying to figure out a way to make our budgets more efficient, okay?
I wish that we could be more specific, but we, we don't know where the savings are gonna come from. It could be, it could be from sick time, it could be from training, it could be from whatnot. But in the, in the end, we'll have the savings.
Well, your, your numbers are getting more pure as we go along. Every year they're gonna get better.
We know the numbers are there. It's just where they're coming from, which category we're gonna be putting it to is where it's gonna ultimately get solid.
Thank you.
All right, go for it.
Thanks, guys.
Excuse me.
Yeah, thank you.
But, but that will have the explanation of this year's budget. I'll, I'll get to Debbie the five year projection that we had for everything, uh, and I'll have all the explanations for you also.
Send those out as a package. Thanks, Gary. Thank you. Go protect the public.
I'm on vacation. I'm going home.
Uh, Chief, step off for a second, so I'm actually gonna skip to the education line. We just paid a lot of. So that, the education line, uh, three percent based on the FinCom. The FinCom's guideline included at, at the increase. And we're gonna be diving into that, as you know, Saturday morning, eight thirty across the school. They'll be, they'll be, the school committee on, uh, the evening's budget for Topsfield School District. We're gonna start, I've had some plenty of conversations with Scott Morrison already around budget and that, um, over this weekend, I, I did just receive a copy of that budget. I'll be diving in myself, uh, reviewing it. So, uh, more to come on the school. Right now it's a placeholder, three percent, again, based on that one.
What you're seeing in the budgets that you got.
The current one I have?
Yeah.
I haven't had a chance to.
How about just the percent at the bottom?
Isn't it nice behind you?
Next, next.
That's it.
Um, so going back to fire.
Oh, so was you, but you wanna finish on Masco? You were saying three percent on Masco?
Yep, everything here is three percent based on the guideline.
And that's not changing yet because you don't have.
We don't have anything on Masco. Masco's timelines are actually farther out.
The only thing I would expect was that the Masco debt service should go down.
It's just a placeholder, the, the way we did it.
But we pretty much know what the debt service is. So that should go down. In other words, it's a given that, we should look at that, okay?
Yeah. Well, the plan is, correct me if I'm correct, Catherine, is once we have those numbers from the schools, um, they'll be, they'll put it into the on-site budget.
They just apply the three percent increase across the board, across everything.
And we want things consistent.
Which, which we don't have to do in the case of debt because we know.
Well, I understand.
Well, it does change based on a percent, so I didn't know what the percent was. It's, it's not, they don't have a debt schedule. It's all filled out from like twenty years the way we do. We pay a percent of the debt based on enrollment still.
Yes, yes, you have to, you have to put a little window in it, yeah. But we know exactly what the debt change, what the debt changes year to year. Not direct to the town of Topsfield until we know what our October number was, which we know already and could actually.
We don't get that sophisticated at this level. We don't get that sophisticated at this level of the budget. They still come up with their actual numbers.
Well, yeah, you just did a three percent across the board and we'll clean that up as those numbers come in and that's, and that's when your debt service number will get down.
So just going back to, um, page eight, fire department. So I'll let Chief speak to some of, from an operations standpoint, some of the things we're looking at in the budget. Just for, uh, increases in the budget, um, you'll notice, um, right now that there's a, um, increase for fourteen hundred dollars, uh, fourteen fifty.
Which line? Okay.
Uh, sorry, my apologies.
Fifty one one four.
One one forty, underwage letter code. Um, right now, the way that from an operations standpoint, um, in the fire department, we have had historically two different people doing part-time work there. And one of which, with the transition on the building inspector's department and Diane picking up four hours there, um, there is a vacancy on that location. There's also the connections, um, in our assistant, um, accounting office, our assistant accountant, so she's, also there's really been an increase in potentially some hours in that office due to some of the workload that Catherine's speaking to previous meetings. So there's a real, I see it as an opportunity to find somebody to fill those hours, a single person, um, dedicated to the fire, uh, potentially. It might not work out that way. There might be somebody else from the, the existing government that decides that this is an opportunity we want to take, but it's something that we'll certainly have an op, an opportunity to look at. In addition to that, um, Chief, I'll let you speak to it, uh, but there is, uh, I mentioned in my budget remarks on the first night we'll submit the budget around coverage at the fire station. Life safety, there's really nothing more important that we do, um, is protect our residents from Topsfield. Doing it fiscally minded, obviously, but to do that, um, one, one element that's good flag, um, is the, the coverage at the fire department. Right now, if a call comes in, uh, over the weekend, uh, serotypes in the evenings, uh, there's a real delay because we don't have the people at the station or on call ready to go. And that's like your depth situations from time to time. That's my high level sort of framing of that. I'll let Chief speak to more of the details of how logistically that works today and how it'll work tomorrow if approved.
Um, so we're just, it's, we're just continuing to look at the program that we started to build upon last year. So last year we, um, took a certain amount of, amount of call wages, certain amount of overtime and we put them in the budget for, um, every night, six P M. to midnight and then all overnight Friday and Saturday nights. And so, um, so that's worked out really well. Um, to be clear, this doesn't guarantee me staffing. It guarantees me the ability to pay for them. I can't always find people to fill.
That was, that was the fifty dollars that we, no, that, you abandoned that program.
We did abandon it. Yep, so we tried it. We were trying, like, we're trying incentives, we're trying different things. So this worked out much better. It's just, there's still gaps that, so I'm gonna have to try to find people that can work those nights. For whatever reason, Sunday nights aren't working out.
On a call fire, on a call basis?
Right, I'm, right.
There are gonna be call firefighters, but they'll be in the station.
That's right. Yeah, so I'm trying to be respectful of the process. It would, the easiest thing would be, trust me, would be to come here and say, I wanna put four or five people on. That would hit, that would be the easiest thing, but I get it. Um, that's not where we're at. One of the things, when I was in high school, I wanted to be a, a reporter. And I really did. And, um, it's so sad what's happened to the newspapers these days. Probably the only good thing that I can say today about, um, this is the tritome, today's tritome, which is.
That is not a good example of a newspaper.
Well, it's really sad. It's really sad. So there's Tom Hall, but the, the thing is, um.
Where's Kevin?
I was gonna wear my Waldo shirt today.
But the, the thing is, um, uh, this merger with the Hamilton Wenon Chronicle, there's this Chronicle, um, uh, to me is sad. It's very sad what happens. The one good thing that it happens is on the front page of this paper with no reference to Topsfield is how call firefighter system is failing nationwide. There's not one mention of Topsfield in here. It's about Hamilton Wenon, but it's exactly the same problem. So last year we put into the program, we had these places. It's great. There is people there at the station during those hours, if I can find them, and so there's a certain percentage that I'm working on, not anything like that. This program would be sixty-five thousand dollars to increase in call wages, not full-time call wages, and it would be to cover the rest of the time. So Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights, midnight to, um, six A M. So we would have the potential to have someone in the station all the time. So in the last six months.
For sixty-five thousand?
Right. So for the last six months, um, not to get into crazy numbers, 'cause I, we also started a new, um, records management system, um, through the, our visual communication center. So, um, so the last six months, um, between, uh, for those six months, we've had seven hundred six incidences. About eight, eight and a half percent of them occur between, um, midnight and six A M. So like, how, how often does this happen?
How, what's their percentage?
Eight and a half percent, right? I wanna tell you though, this is my worry. Here, I'm gonna show you this. This is my show and house. And I have to excuse my, uh, family dog and anything like that, but, um, so that's eight, eight point five. You might say, oh, that's, that's no big deal, right? That's, that's not that much.
Doesn't sound like a big number.
This is John. Everybody see John? John, this is John, 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 and me. Uh, my daughter and I went and shoveled his driveway on Sunday. John, um, unfortunately passed away last Wednesday night and actually in the morning he passed away. And our system failed him miserably. It happened in the, at one o'clock in the morning when the station was unmanned. Um, the, the ambulance company provided, the providing ambulance company sent basic E M Ts, not paramedics, because of the nature of what he, what John and his wife reported was wrong. It was a different problem once we got there and found it out. I didn't go on the original call. I waited. Our dispatch policy is after four minutes it gets re-toned. I did go on the second call. Our, our Topsfield Fire Department, um, ambulance came after the, the other ambulance got here. And so, lunch or short, his heart stopped in, in this process. And we were able to resuscitate him, but had anything been delayed three minutes along that process, I would've been stuck in the back of the ambulance with him in cardiac arrest. Fortunately, that didn't happen. It happened as we were in the lobby of hospital waiting for bed. So with our equipment still on him, where I could shock him right there. So he was home two days later, which is crazy, crazy. But that's how, that can't happen. So when you think about that, John is one of those eight and a half percent.
So you said he died, but he didn't die?
He did die, but he's alive.
You revived him? Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes. But so our system failed him totally. So he's an eight point five percenter. And so of those eight and a half percents which recur between midnight and six A M., thirty percent of them, it's either me or no one goes from the Topsfield Fire Department. So that means if you have, um, if you live in a elderly, a senior housing development at the end of town, it might be myself and it's such a fire engine that comes. So there, like, I have, you know, um, stories and stories of psychiatric emergencies where it's only one person and no police officers 'cause they're tied up on something else. Like, you can't, you can't, you don't want the garbage man to go out alone. So we don't wanna have our people alone in those situations. So, um, did I?
I, I can't imagine you wanting to send somebody out on call by themselves.
Definitely not, especially not those kind of dangerous calls. But, um, so is it, did I make, did I, do you understand that?
Oh, yeah.
So, um, so anyway, that's, I thought this was the most reasonable way to do it. Um, and then it's incremental. We'll see how it goes. I'm not at the point where I can offer, uh, cuts in budget because there are, I don't have staff to even do that. So, um, once I, if there were a possibility that we had guaranteed staffing, then you could talk about still alarms and not having those requests for, um, people to come. But we're not at that point yet. So that's, that's the biggest part of this budget is that sixty-five thousand in call wages. Um, it's hard, the rest of it's a little bit hard because everybody's contract is up this year. Blessings.
So in that particular case, as I look at your wages right here, um, I see it going up twenty-four, four percent. If we add another sixty-five into that, um, it's gonna go up.
Yeah, it, yeah, I don't have the, um, I should've done that, but yeah, when you take it out of the, you know, it's, it is, obviously it looks like a much bigger jump than the, um, yeah.
Basically, it's a thirty-five hundred. The thirty-five hundred that is in here is for basically contractual and other stuff, so it would be another sixty-five on top of that.
Right, yeah.
And that is, you know, in the order of seven percent of the total, um, for that service. So it's eight and a half percent of the time or the act of the situations. And you're essentially asking for something in the order of a seven percent increase. Okay. I'm just trying to get a handle.
Yeah, no, I get that. Yep, yep, yeah. And then, um, like, um, on a side note, um, as of today, we brought in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the general fund with ambulance revenue. So that's another part of it, um, that if you look at, um, cost reporting and all that kind of stuff, it's super complicated. But, uh, in the times where I've looked at it, for every one dollar that we spent in personnel and, um, billing and administrative costs, we bring back five dollars in, in receipts for that run for the ambulance. So I'm not ever saying that ambulances would ever cover everything, but that's a big chunk of revenue that's coming into the town now that didn't come in.
The, the ambulance revenue is increasing definitely. It's just, it's amazing. I just, you can have the revenues, it's just gone straight up.
Does that money have to go to the general fund?
Unless something else is set up for it, but yes, it has to go to the general fund.
I mean, the highway department gives chapter, chapter ninety from, from the state too, but it doesn't go to the general fund?
No, but there's.
The highway department uses the money.
Unless there's a law that governs how the money can be spent differently, it has to go to the general fund.
I understand.
So, I mean, there are options that you could do, like a debt price fund or a revenue, or, um, revolving fund, but it's, um, unless it was self-supporting, then you, you know. So it's something to consider, but I don't know.
We've talked about this for years. Uh, there are some of us that have realized for years that we're underfunded and undermanned in the fire department. And I think because of stories like you just showed us, I think in a sense, you could debate the fact that we're doing a real disservice to a number of people of the town by not being able to get there when they're needed. And three minutes can be a major factor.
It can, and it just, um, it just.
You guys took care of me one night at nine o'clock at night.
Yeah, you just can't, um, you can't expect to run an emergency service like we do. So we have to, we've evolved, we've come a long way. Our people are great. They have really made a lot of operational changes in a short amount of time. They do a really great job and, um, my challenge is to find people that will continue to do that. There is, there is not a lot of people, as the same in the police department, knocking on doors to do this kind of work. People just don't wanna do this kind of work.
I saw a sign on a billboard, Owen Hamilton.
Right, Hamilton.
Call firefighters. If you're interested, call.
You got it. And, yeah, everybody's been putting those out recently, so, uh, we're all in the same boat and, which of course leads to the talk about sharing personnel.
How are you gonna find those?
Um, well, we're continuing to. We've had some people approach us. Um, we just put on a young woman from Topsfield and things like that. So we'll continue advertising. We've found, believe it or not, social media is the best way to get people, uh, besides word of mouth, of course. But, so we've done, we did, I mean, at last time I analyzed like, uh, you know, advertising on mass municipal websites versus newspaper ads and stuff like that. And by far the social media is, you can't, you can't, you know.
Well, everybody's looking at that stuff and nobody reads newspapers.
Nobody's looking at the road. Yeah, right, exactly. All of that stuff. Yeah, that's why, that's why this, yeah. So anyway, that's the, um, that's the main, um, main thing.
Well, as Kevin said, our responsibility, our primary responsibility typically is that a public safety followed by education. We need to do it well. We have a, you know, records, a fire study committee who explained to us that what we're trying to do won't work. And they made it pretty clear for the reasons, and it represented a number of people that were very qualified in their area. And now we've proven, as the chief says, we fail people that we're not able to do with the system. And so we need to think differently. It's our responsibility as a board to think differently. And one of the things that we should be doing is looking at an ambulance contract that will serve us better. Now, maybe it'll cost us some money. I don't know. But we need to go out to the ambulance services and acquire the people that are experts in medical only. They don't do fire. But they do enough volume so that they have the experience and the ability to answer responses to calls. We cannot depend upon one or two people in the town of Topsfield to be our medical service. And there are ambulance companies that are interested in some kind of contracts. We need to specify what we want and see the types of responses they get. We might also just discuss with them what their thoughts are and what they might come back with.
Don't we already have a contract with an ambulance company?
We do. But it, but, but you have to have a contract that gets us what we want, which is a certain kind of response.
But that would probably mean that you have an ambulance in, stationed in town.
Stationed in town. We've talked about that.
I'm just saying.
You gotta be careful about this idea of stationing, wait, stationing an ambulance. There's different ways of looking at it. If that ambulance is only allowed to deal with Topsfield people, it won't work. No way. Same problem that we have in Topsfield as far as training. The people don't wanna work that ambulance 'cause they won't get much experience. So what you need to do is work out a contract with some ambulance company and have them come up back to us. This is their business. Come back to us with ways in which they can improve whatever it is we're trying to achieve. And in the process, and we've had this before, when they have suggested that at times we'd like to have an ambulance in Topsfield. Or maybe they'll put one here, uh, in a building here someplace for Topsfield when they choose to use that one in Topsfield or someplace else. They know how to deal with economies of scale and random arrival rates, which are the calls that you get for medical.
So do we just have a bad contract currently with an ambulance company? Because we do have one.
We have a long kind of contract if you would. And it specifies, well, twelve hours.
Can I just say, just say one thing?
Yeah, good, good, I.
You've been through this, I hear. We've been through it over and over again, I think.
Yeah, I am not, um, Mr. Gans' feelings are, everybody knows, the same feelings as always. Um, well, I'm not talking about, um, because I used the example of John. I don't wanna get the, it is all about fire and medical. Um, and it's the same, so there, there are two things and these people are cross-trained. Um, so for me, it's the best value. You have people that are cross-trained who do both jobs. And you have, um, them doing the work and bringing in the revenue for the work they do, not doing the work and giving the revenue to a private vendor who is just taking the money for their own profit. So, um, I hear what you're saying. It hasn't changed in all these years. We have changed dramatically our service delivery model, mentioning in that committee. We have implemented almost every single recommendation that they put forth, including the staffing model is one of the ones they put forth. So, um, I don't have a lot of.
Yeah, I guess the one thing I, I would say is, um, again, going back to Masco, we looked at putting a new bus on the route. And several years ago, it was gonna be fifty-two thousand. I think the latest estimate was fifty-eight thousand. That's for a bus that goes out for an hour and a half twice a day. And has an, has a licensed but not skilled professional at the wheel. And that's fifty-eight thousand. My guess is to get the response time, which is part of it, it's not just the agreement they'll come, but is it accounting for Beverly or Danvers, you adding minutes and minutes to that time? That the cost would be well in excess of sixty-nine thousand. I would guess well over twice that. My feeling is at this stage of the game, given the research that's been done, this could, at the cost of trying to find the people who can fill those slots, which I think is the challenge, be the most cost-effective way. Um, my guess is that if we took a poll among residents, um, and we said, uh, how long do you think it takes an ambulance to arrive? And then said, um, what if you knew that on average it might take twice that long at night?
Well, and also, um, I, I appreciate all that. And, um, it's, um, it's, um, it's, when people are in distress, whoever shows up the door is gonna, they don't, they don't have any idea of what the help they're getting is. They're just grateful to see someone. And so, you know, we wanna be, um, if you look at our neighboring, our, all the neighboring towns are already, they're doing this. Georgetown is way ahead of, they just put full-time firefighters on. You know, uh, Wenon just did this. They, they did ambulance service. Like, at some point, this is, obviously other towns are seeing this as some way to, you, you don't have any ways to generate revenue, and here's a way to generate revenue. And you're also, you're offsetting costs, but this is the, you're gonna see the, I think, more of a regional approach, more people helping each other. And that's really the only way it's just gonna work. All these small towns, we just can't do it alone. We're gonna have to do that in a regional way. So, um.
One other thought too, or just another community, Beverly, that I know, we have, um, uh, ambulance response from our fire department as well. Many times, even though the.
I'm sorry, you, you said.
They have ambulance service in Beverly as well through the fire department, but they also have a, a contract with Brian, same as Topsfield.
Yep.
To provide, um, ambulance. But many times, even Beverly, where they're stationed with the ambulance, they have, we went up with Brian a few weeks ago now, just to discuss the operations for the ambulance and contracts associated with it. It's a response time of fourteen minutes, which if we weren't offering our services in addition to them giving the call to come as well, we would have to find a different solution. We'd have to house them here.
Yeah.
Um, because a fourteen minute response time, it's contractual. Sometimes it's less, most times it's less, but that's sort of the threshold in the contract. And to your point, uh, something, yes, you know, you know, can we, can we say, work from the other side up, say, this is what we need you to do, not what do you think you can get here and how do we get there? Those are part of the conversations we have as well, absolutely.
Absolutely.
But just from, again, just experiencing another community, city of Beverly, um, I think Chief, you just said it very well. When someone's calling nine-one-one and, and they need that support, that time of need, um, you know. When someone's calling nine-one-one and they need that support, that time of need, um, you know, quicker, somebody there who has been trained at some level. Um, and I know our team's, I think, cross-trained very, and it's appropriate. Um, assess the situation, and then to address the situation while a backup bus is on its way. Um, but it's Beverly, Topsfield. Uh, it's about that, that great response. Spent some time up at the rec just yesterday. Uh, got a tour of that, talked about response times and the importance of those as well. It all comes down to, when that person hits that nine-one-one, and when they arrive at your front door.
Um, Chief, are there any towns who currently have an agreement with an ambulance company where they're completely satisfied at the response times for us to look and say, "This is the price tag associated with that", to compare it as a model? But to.
I'm sure.
I don't really know. I know, I don't know. I know, um, it's really important that you compare apple, I sound like my dad, apples and apples and not apples and oranges. And we're talking about a guaranteed response in a very short amount of time. So, that would be, you know, like a city of Beverly, that's when you have a housing in your community. And when we went through this, um, the price tag that Brian had talked about was hundreds and hundreds of thousands more. Um, you know, it's not, you don't want an ambulance stationed in Topsfield that's available to do dialysis runs and everything like that, because that's where they're gonna be. Then we're nowhere. Um, and that's why this is, this model is what you're seeing people going to, or people have been doing it, a town like Middleton has been doing this for decades. Um, and so, the town of Hamilton's been doing it for decades. So, like, these are the kind of, these are the models where you have people that can do either job and do their job well, and, um, at the moment, at a drop of a hat, can switch hats to do that. So, I don't know specifically different, um, communities, you know, have, you know. It's, the, the world of ambulance, um, I'm sure any ambulance owner will tell you, the ambulance delivery, um, service is totally different. It's changed, and that's why, you know, I came to you guys in June or July and talked about that, that the world has changed a lot in that, and it's so much busier. And that's part of the reason you're seeing the revenue increase and things like that. It's just, there's so much, sick people, short on lives to stay.
Older people. I mean, the communities.
I don't know who you're talking about, but yeah, that's it. But yes.
Well, here, look at me.
For no one to get to look at.
That's what she was saying. She was just.
Right through, together.
Look at all of us, yeah. But, um, so anyway.
I mean, that's part of the problem. I mean, there are more, or older people.
Well, it's also part of the blessing to be together and helping. Last half full. Um, so anyway, the, um, our group, my group is doing a really great job. We appreciate the support of the town. The town has always supported us, and, um, so I think that, and myself as a taxpayer, this is a cost-effective way to, um, put somebody in a station all the time.
Well, I think the fact that so many towns are following the same model. You have a lot of minds looking at this, trying to problem solve it, and you all seem to be coming up with the same solution. The only reason I put it out there is that, to your point, Dick, if, if this is a concern of yours, it does come up each time we have this discussion. And so, if there were numbers to put it to bed, to say, "This is what that kind of a service costs, and it is far more expensive and only handles the medical side, not the fire side",
you have to, you know.
Then, then we can kind of close out the discussion on it, um, and then concentrate on moving towards a certain model and perfecting that.
Right, you have to, you have to stop looking at just the ambulance. You have to look at the fire side, too. You cannot ignore that, because in some cases, that's almost more dangerous to not have someone respond to a fire, or a carbon dioxide collar, hazardous material collar.
I have a window in my house up at Great Hill that looks right out of the street, and I can tell every time somebody burns the toast in one of their kitchens, because here comes a fire truck.
More away from you, bye.
So, so, uh, I think it still falls to us, though, as our responsibility to look out for what the alternatives are, because we know what we have now, we've been told, is not working, and what sorts of things we can do, and what it would cost. But you made the suggestion that it would be twice as much or whatever. We don't have anything to go on right now. I can give you what we, what happened in our contracts eight years ago or something of that nature.
Well, I was gonna say, eight or ten years ago, that's it.
But that's, but, you know, if you want, I'll be glad to do that, but I, I think that's regurgitating where we were at that point. What we need to do is deal with what's going on now in the marketplace and what might be available. There may have been things that were available then that's not available now, or vice versa. But it is an issue that needs to be addressed properly, and we are the folks who are responsible for doing that, because public safety is our responsibility. Now, one of the things that we need to be careful of is this increase in building with ambulance. We have a service on plan which clearly says that our objective is to keep our personnel in Topsfield and not to transport people, because when we do transport people, we take our people away from the town of Topsfield to respond to another request, a fire or whatever it happens to be. So, we need to look at that and try to understand why that's going on, and perhaps put some pressure on the existing contract, well, ambulance company, whatever it happens to be, to do a better job. I, I don't know, but I know that it falls to us to work this thing out.
Well, my, my, my understanding is that our ambulance service is not a full-time ambulance service. We own them to provide backup to the contracted ambulance services that we have. And I see them both at Great Hill frequently, and almost always. Uh, we never take it if the backup, if the contracted ambulance service shows up. Um, sometimes they can't get here.
Right.
And if that's the case, then our ambulance will take them to the hospital.
Right, and so, um, two things. Um, again, we're talking about ambulances only, but this is a bigger problem.
Yeah, actually.
Um, that's why I came to you in July and said that some, we have, we have a policy that says that if there is more patients than one ambulance can handle, if there's a delay in the care, blah, 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 if they don't send the right level of care, that we would transport. So, what, that's why I tried, I came here and told you that, that that has definitely changed. We've seen a trend, so we don't delay now. We don't wait for Northeast to come. So, if we're ready to go and, and it's the right level of care, we're gonna go. So, that's why you're seeing the increase in transports, because the whole world of EMS has changed. And that's, that is, they're, they're, everybody's busier, so that's.
Well, you told me frequently that your people are more qualified than the people that ride our contracted ambulance service.
Well, some of the new, I can't speak to their employees, but they're younger. But I was gonna say, have we ever looked at a private security form for our police departments? Have we ever looked at that? I mean, but really, if we're gonna talk about that, have we looked at private security and not having to pay the police department? I mean, if that's.
Yeah, I'd like to sort of take this offline, because we're not gonna resolve it right now.
No, it's a soon thing every time.
I don't think anything of tremendous significance is going to be part of the two thousand twenty-one budget. Um, we can have a conversation later and see whether in future years, we need to adjust things. Um, uh, Chief, you've made your case as to why you believe that sixty-five thousand would be very justified as a, at least to fill in, if not a permanent, semi-permanent solution to the staffing issue, so thank you. Is there anything else?
Could we just ask Chief, the five thousand, uh, the second line?
Sure. I think you should get out of the way.
Yeah.
Ambulance-related.
Chief, is the five thousand, um, when they, professional services or?
Yeah, yeah, it's, um, it's directly related in.
Where are you at, I'm sorry?
Uh, the next page, page nine.
Oh, what's the line I remember?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-three, eight hundred.
Fifty-three.
Uh, it's.
Second one down.
Fifty-eight hundred. Fifty-three.
So, this is.
That's five thousand.
Line fifty-three, four, there it is, yeah.
Yep, that's almost directly related to billing, so you have a contract with Northeast Regional Ambulance to bill.
Yeah.
Ambulance billing, so our, our, um, volume has increased such that we pay three percent, we pay down three percent of, um, the money that we get back.
To handle our billing.
Right.
Okay.
Administrative component.
Right.
That's right.
This is due to increased, right.
And it's, it's offset by the revenue, but the revenue, again, from that goes to general funds. It's not, it's not in the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it looks like it's a solely, solely increase, but just like the flu clinics, for example, the reverse.
We oughta figure, we gotta figure out a way to set up an enterprise that can give it to the fire department or give it to me or something.
Wait, the police chief retirement, can I?
I just, go ahead.
I just have a couple of things that are not budget-related. Is that okay to do or not?
Um, what are you talking about?
Just, just really quickly, I'm gonna leave him, even if you say no, I'm just leaving him. Um, today was a good.
No matter what you say, he's gonna do it.
Did you just, do you please pass those to, those are for Deb. Those are just for Deb. I promised her those. Um, today, we got, um, we got notified of two different grants. One was, um, municipal vulnerability program, um, it's a twenty-seven thousand dollar grant. So, I just have, I printed out the contract and maybe, do you think, Deb, you should have all that? And then you can get the signatures, so that's that. And the other one.
This is your applying for the twenty-seven thousand?
Nope, we got it today. Yeah, we applied for fifteen thousand and got twenty-seven.
Well, there's happier fifty-five.
That's for, that's for the twenty-seven. I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be fresh.
I do want to say, Chief came, yes, came to be on this one.
You're fresh all the time, man, you were talking about that.
Hold it, just listen to me. Um, it's, previously, fourth, or, cap, fourth quarter of last year, we received a hazard mitigation grant, which is federally funded. Uh, I believe it was for sixteen.
Fifty-nine.
Sixteen.
No, no, sorry, nineteen-five, it's dyslexic.
Yeah, it was about twenty thousand dollars.
No, that's the washer, right.
There's a Nash component to that, which we then applied for the MDP grant, municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, which allows basically the same thing, which is to create a plan associated with how you're gonna assess your assets, um, protect your assets, um, and address climate change ultimately through that, through that process. And Chief just said, we, we applied and received more funds with the MDP grant than we originally anticipated, which allows to have a more comprehensive report, um, and a single report that we can address to both of those grants rather than two individual ones that basically do the same thing. So, timing of it was fantastic. The fact that we were able to receive it is really important to me, and Chief's leadership on it was very important.
It also puts us in a really good favorable light to receive other grants of that. But, so that's like, those ones that you need for those culverts on East Street and stuff like that. So, we've kind of, we need to do that. And then, we got a sixty-three hundred dollar grant for our senior safe and safe fire education, so those were.
Great, I just, what was the twenty-seven thousand for?
It's for a municipal vulnerability grant, so it's to, to assess your.
Assessment, yeah.
Yeah, to assess like your critical infrastructure and then related to flooding and things like that, and to develop a plan.
To find out how capable people are.
Seriously, creates paperwork that we can give to the government, that the government says, "You got a plan, you can apply for grants", but this, this isn't.
Really, it's the face system.
You can't apply.
So, who is actually gonna do this, Chief? Is this MAPC that's going to do the work, or?
It's, these are considered small grants, so, so I don't have to follow the total procurement process. I've been, my, that would be my, um, that would be a vendor that would be really interesting to me. Um, there's a list of vendors that you can use, and, um, the fact that there are two grants together is aggressive. They, everybody warned me that, but it only makes sense to do the two programs together.
The answers are going out to the bid, and I didn't understand. I thought it was already worked out. Thank you.
Chief, if you ever get tired of fire and rescue, um, we could create a position.
It's a grant right there.
But, but we're not going out to, we don't have to go out to bid, but we have to request a couple of things. So, it's, it's not a big, honey thing.
But a vendor will do that.
Thank you.
Let's keep moving on.
Quarter or five. So, um, we also have Steve Shepherd from Harpson's, Chief's agent, by the way.
Oh, yeah, you're on.
Wait a minute, I'm gonna wait, catch you a pillow, yeah.
Steve, you're right.
Not you, Steve, it's, it's.
It's a door prize for.
It's been a long day already. I start early in the morning.
Uh, so, turn to page fourteen, um.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So, um, Park and Cemetery. Um, right now, if you look at that, um, the, under the graded salaries.
Yep.
It's all contractually related, and what these are based on graded steps or, uh, union contracts, or we should say, unknown on the union contracts at this point, like we talked about. Um, but there are, the stepping grade, the graded step, uh, does go in there for Steve, um, and administrative support that he has. Um, and other than that, it's.
Yeah, and there's no, um, other, other guy requests?
No, nothing in the other part of the budget. The only thing you're seeing, like, like the town administrator said, you're gonna see the regular increases that are either on the pay grid or represented by union contracts. And all of our full-time employees are all union now. So, um, I, the figures are gonna change a little bit going forward, and I don't know where that's gonna fall.
They're, they're all union?
All union, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't, I, like I said, there'll be small changes there. Um, oh.
Uh-oh.
Oh, hey.
Other one, other one.
Other one, that's just gonna make us hotter while we sit in the dark. Other, other control room to your left.
Yeah.
To your left.
Here we are.
The other two, uh, Steve handles.
Yeah, you oughta check the others, because you've just changed.
Let's keep going, because I'm concerned about time, please.
So, the only thing that Steve handles, and we've had, you talked to him and Wendy and myself, a number of conversations, more recently with Weston and Sampson, is the monitoring contract for the landfill. Um, currently, there's a contract that exists, existed for about twenty years, and at this point, there's an opportunity for us to, um, apply for a reduction in some of the testing requirements associated with it, um, which will ultimately save funds for the community if accepted by DEP. We just put out a contract, Weston Sampson, to do the application. Um, the savings could be upwards of seven thousand dollars a year, um, annually, if they, DEP does accept those changes. So, the net benefit of going out with the, uh, the contracts to have them, for the application for, was, was helpful. Although that said, um, we also have a seven thousand dollar increase on that line. And I'll note that we did not reduce the forty thousand dollar cost in the budget, because it's an unknown whether DEP will or will not allow us to do that.
We kept it the same.
We kept it flat conservatively, because we don't, DEP can take a long time and sometimes make decisions that we're gonna have to go back a second, third time to ask. We do have a seven thousand dollars, which is representative in an increase, but that is for P-FAS testing at the landfill. Um, as some of you know, there's federal guidelines that are, um, that have been established around P-FAS, which is a new component that is being tested for Massachusetts. Is right now going through the public process to identify what the thresholds for P-FAS contamination will look like. Uh, the federal government has forty parts per trillion, um, to, to identify that as a threshold locally, or state, they're looking at twenty. Um, and that is, twenty is the number, but up until years ago, twenty was so small that they couldn't actually test that, that granular for it. Um, so, there's public lobbying right now around that, that threshold. What that means is that we are gonna have to start testing for P-FAS in and around the landfill to identify, um, if there is any notable contamination. The one thing I'll say is the caveat is, although they are saying this is gonna be the threshold, there has been no indication what the remediation will look like. Um, it's, it has not been discussed yet, so.
And when it will be required.
Correct. So, it's an unknown, but the testing is required, it's the next step, and that's why that seven thousand dollars is in there. Steve, I know you were here for so long, I don't want to stay.
No, no, you're doing great.
Seven thousand dollars, this, what line I have?
Oh, I thought it was the red right here on fourteen, the lower bottom, way down the bottom.
Oh, way down here, okay, got it.
So, you need to be prepared for that financially, so if it does come forward, you know, you got the funds to be able to handle it.
Steve, can I just ask you about that line item? It looks like.
The same one.
Uh, the same one. It looks like we're budgeted for forty thousand, and we've only spent two thousand four hundred to date for half a year. That same one we're talking about?
That's the timing, because it's.
No, yeah, it's still timed, right.
We can, we can.
Look them in and do it.
Yeah. The, the monitoring contract is thirty-eight, like thirty-eight, seven by itself.
Oh, okay, that's why. I'm like, how do you go from twenty-four hundred up to the forty? He said it's $38,000.
Yes.
They haven't done anything yet, that's why.
The $24,000, there was also some money still that was in the enterprise fund for solid waste. That's what was being paid before it became part of the budget.
Okay. All right, well, that explains it. I didn't realize it was $38,000. It's coming in the second one. Thank you.
And to just add a little bit in, in what the town administrator said about the, the two contracts, the two contracts that, that we did propose in speaking with Weston Sampson are to reduce the flares, to turn them into an active flare into a passive solar, excuse me, a passive vent. So if we get that, we're looking at $7,000 a year. We gotta do a minimal of 10 more years testing. So that alone could be a $70,000 savings in 10 years. Reduction in the monitoring on the water, if we get that as well, that's another $7,000 a year. So you're looking at $140,000 in 10 years savings. As long as they get passed in, in the full way that we've represented it.
Meaning the D E P accepts what Weston Sampson puts forward.
That's correct, correct, the contract.
As the reasons why we should not have to test as frequently as we ought to.
Yeah, that's correct. So it would be a tremendous savings coming forward.
So in summary, though, Park and Cemetery has no outside of guidelines, but landfill has $7,000 outside of guidelines.
Which is contractual, yes.
Well, contractual or not, the way they think, Con, just for our thinking, has $7,000. Okay.
Yep. Steve, thank you.
Okay, did you want to just talk about the, the holiday walk?
Oh, yeah, sure. We did, we touched on that actually on the first, first Thursday. But I'll just say, I asked Steve to do a little research on that $5,000 that we were putting forward, just to get a little granular with it. So Steve...
Yeah, we're, we're actually gonna be putting that together, Commissioner Rehack and myself. And we're gonna, I'll be putting together the park portion of it and what we do and expenses that we have. And Commissioner Rehack will be doing what the holiday, the recreation end of it and the Holiday Committee expense, so...
Where is that shown on the, what is...
Page eighteen. It's actually later in the budget.
What is it called?
PG.
A holiday in the Green Day.
It's right before debt service.
Oh, oh.
There it is.
Okay.
But to add to that, like we said, we'll, we'll have full explanation of why we're asking for that figure. But just to add to that, we just had a meeting the other night and the board did discuss updating the electrical panels out here a little bit. And the one that's by the gazebo represents all the events for the town. So it's not just, you know, Christmas holiday lights. It represents band concerts. It represents strawberry fest and any activities that take place on that common. So, and we're looking at safety versus functionality first. And it's time to get these two panels, the one in front of the town hall and the one at the gazebo, updated. So we're gonna have a figure. I've just spoke to an electrician on Tuesday. And we should have a figure.
Four figures, four figures though, you're assuming.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but on the light side, I'm, I'm not looking at anything tremendous.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but that, you know, when we have that, I'll include that with...
But you gotta wait until next year's, you gotta wait until, you're not gonna be able to do it until July if it gets passed here.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Tell me about the lights in the gazebo. Every time my wife walks by there, she wants to unplug them. Tell me, the lights are on in a gazebo most of the time, even in the day.
The Christmas lights, are you talking about?
Yeah.
They shouldn't be on at all unless somebody's playing with the switch.
I don't know where the switches are, but my wife wants to unplug them. She wants you to turn the lights off. I tell her to leave them alone.
The problem is, whenever we hold an event, we have to keep everything unlocked so that event can be, turn the circuits back on when they trip circuits and so on.
Is there a switch on the gazebo?
Uh, yes, there is, but the switch is right there. They got electricity right to the gazebo.
Well, okay, so you're saying somebody come and turn it on?
Oh, yeah. You get people that visit the gazebo, they'll just hit the button and the lights will be on.
Not a big deal, but she worries about those lights being on.
It's a pain.
Why are they on?
Steve, I remember seeing something somewhere about resurfacing of the tennis courts.
Yes.
It looked like it didn't make it in here or is it a separate item?
I do believe we...
Capital, I don't know.
Yeah, we did put it in the capital.
We did capital, okay.
Yeah.
Not to do Stewart's Google.
No, this is strictly do resurface, fill cracks and paint the surface over at Grove Street. And the best thing we ever did over here at Grove Street was to cut that court into four pieces. And every, the four pieces shift independently of each other in frost heaping. Best thing we ever did. You've gotten tremendous life out of that court.
Good.
Yeah. I strongly recommend that going forward for, you know, maybe Stewart Courts or Rehab.
That's good. Great work. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Is my thing on the record?
Sorry, I know it's not my turn yet, but I just wanna say what a tremendous asset Steve is. He's amazing.
Thank you.
Paul, you're up.
Thank you, Paul.
Page fifteen, I'm correct. That's correct, page fifteen. So council aging, you'll notice there are these step increases on the wage and salary. There is under duties, publication, memberships, a $31 increase to that based on actual real costs that will incur associated with that. This, there's not much happening on this budget, but I will say, we do have a retirement coming out of that department, pegged after, how many years there? Thirteen years is, who's worked around nine hours a week, is, is, is going to enjoy retirement shortly.
In her, in her little, sitting in her little Chevy home?
Yeah.
Closet, closet.
Closet, yeah.
One thing we'll, we're looking at holistically though is, anytime there's transition within the department, we just look at how the makeup of that looks like. And we're, we're going through that path right now, just kind of looking at the makeup. But we're, right now, everything in this budget is pretty much two guidelines. I mean, those are just...
Paula, $31? Have you lost control of your budget?
Actually, no, I'm gonna segue right over. I brought a couple of friends with us. When we, Kevin and I met with our, my new liaison to FinCom and she was great, very energetic, lots of questions. And so she had great interest in the friends, in their contributions. So I thought, as a warm-up to seeing them next week, we brought Chris Roman, who's been the treasurer for many, many years and has a good handle on the finances. And then Kathy Caron, who's newer to the team, but dove right in. So I brought them along today just so you can ask questions. Chris, I don't know if there's anything you want to start with or just anything you have to say.
I, I think Paula was hoping that I would mention how much we, we spent for the, for the physical space that we have upstairs. It came from the friends donations. And last year, it was $16,777. And this year, $6,113 for the, you know, furnishing and supplying and equipping.
It's like capital, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. It's a great space.
That's important stuff, too. Done a good job.
Are you continuing to find that for your clients' offices and so on, that the new space is really, really providing the services and the quality of place that they feel excited about?
I am gonna make a statement.
Board chair, Ken Rogers.
We have probably the double of the participants since you moved here.
Wow.
Yeah. The, the, the programming going out to different places, we normally have at least 14 or 15 people to 19, 20 people. So the excitement over the programming and even upstairs, we do have less people currently because it's so cold. A lot of people are sick and a lot have gone to Florida. But we are definitely generating a need of the seniors in town. And I just wanna say that we have been so successful because of Paula Burke.
No question.
She has made such a difference of what the council of aging...
The facility is nice, and I'm sure that attracts some people too. But it's her that, and you guys, that are putting together the programs, I mean. That's what it's all about.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at the Senior Scoop, the newsletter that comes out?
I look it out.
I would be with them every day if I could. There are so many interesting activities.
There's a lot of stuff going on.
It is terrific.
That actually leads me to a question I have. Have you tried to figure out, or have you figured out what percentage of population of seniors, however you define that, participate in any program? I know some people do everything, some people do one thing a year. But how many, what percentage of people you touch of are citizens?
Yes, I'm putting those numbers, very specific numbers together for the FinCom. But I can tell you right here, we are up to 30% seniors in town.
Wow.
And I should, and I just got that from the town clerk today. So that was as, you know...
I mean, 30% of the town are seniors?
Yeah.
Or 30% of the seniors?
30% of the town.
Are seniors?
Are seniors.
Okay.
And we also...
You mean 60 and over?
60 and over.